I'm wondering, well, hey, that, sorry. I can probably find your chair somewhere. There's a chair right up here.
One right beside the table if it's a...
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you. Okay, all right, good evening, everyone. We have, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the August 12th meeting. The minutes have been circulated and we have a motion to accept those minutes. Tim makes the motion, is there a second? Tina, second, so any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion or questions, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Okay, reports from the departments. Louis, tonight is your first on the agenda.
All right, so I just wanted to go over a few things that we did already this month. Casey's in the Vineyard Cemetery, it's all done with road millings. We put all the drainage pipes in, we dropped inlets, so those are all done. We also did a reservoir road with road millings. That road, steep hills will wash it out all the time, so it looks like the first rainstorm we had last weekend, it held up. We also dished for the county this month. We also paved Bill Huber Road, which is our road, that's all done. We've helped Blackbrook pave this month, and we are currently paving this week with North Delva, helping them out. All material and work to pave the road.
Any questions for Louis? Okay.
I have a question in the... Can I have that?
Sure.
There was a bill to fix the town of Jay roller, Louis.
Yes, so we borrowed that to do the road milling for the last month and a half, and it broke down, so we fixed it because we borrowed it.
Okay.
Because if we rented a roller, it'd been like $3,000 for the month, and we bought one theirs for nothing, and the bill was the debt was $600, so we repaired it.
Okay.
Are you going to stay for the building?
What's that?
Are you going to stick around for a little while after? Will you be planning on being here for most of the meetings?
Yes.
I'm going to bring up the park trees in my report, and I just have questions for you about that.
Okay.
I'll wait.
Thank you.
Okay, Eddie has submitted a water report for the month of August. There's 4,300, ah, 4,382,100 gallons produced in Water District 1. The daily average was 175,300, 175,300 gallons. The gallons to wipe this for, for the month was 57,200, the daily average is 1,800. Eddie has continued to do samples as required by law. I also can probably bring up that, so one of the things Ed is also working on is when he... Each year, we have two different reservoirs up there, and he will take the water out of the reservoir to help clean it from, you know, sort of weeds and things like that, and then he does one reservoir first, then he does the second one. One of the reservoirs has repair needs because years ago, they sunk some metal poles into the concrete in which to put the fence around it. And so some of those parts where the poles have gone into the concrete are cracked because of, you know, changes in temperature and wearing and things like that. And Ed has arranged with the county to have the county contractor... So when the county has a contractor, we can piggyback off of the contractor. And so Ed has started making arrangements with the contractor from the county to go up there, take a look at the repairs and make the repairs to the concrete. I don't have an update exactly how things are going with that, but I know he's been in contact with the contractor up there to get those repairs done with that reservoir. And then, you know, that it could be fully filled or whatever, I just don't know what the status of that is. So I just brought that to your attention because I happen to know about it because I was dealing with the county as well on that topic. And so it's not included in the report, but I felt it okay to bring it up. Let's see now, Parks is excused. Doug is on vacation, so he's excused, but he gave us a written report showing the activity for the month of August. He said that there's eight new building permits issued, collected $1,536. He's got 48 open permits and 20-plus site visits. The short-term rental update is we're still at 150, which is our cap limit. We've collected $28,550 to date in the short-term rental permit fees. And he has a total collected over since the beginning of when we started charging short-term rental permit fees. There's a waiting list for the STR permits, there's three complete entries and complete applications. That was his report.
Can I speak on Parks permit?
Yeah, please.
Just to touch on it, the Festival of Colors being this weekend, I did talk to John, and he said that Casey would be on. If anybody needed anything, he'll be around, and then John will be back around at the end of the day when he's done from the transportation to help at the end of the day.
Thank you. I also talked to John today for a few minutes. And how long did we budget for Casey to stay on for? Was it until the end of September, end of October?
Usually like after Columbus Day.
Okay. He did say, you know, he can use him. So, I mean, if we want to keep him on to the end of October or even after that, I think that would probably be helpful to him. I mean, as we all know, there are plenty of projects that have been on the back burner for years, and he could use the manpower.
We'll have to look at the budget and see where we stand and what we have left and...
Yeah, we have the, you know, at the end of next month, and so at the end of September, we'll be in a good position to know how much we expect so far in that particular budget. Thank you.
Don't we have, I'll bring it up, we'll talk about the budget.
Okay. All right, so no dogs this month either, so let's go back to the report from the board members. So Tim, please.
Okay, going back to Parks. There are these trees that we've been talking about since the spring. And we should make a decision, we've received two bids, and we should... Unless, unless someone else up here knows more than I do about this, the trees are still standing, and they should be taken down. And we've received two bids. I think the one from Precision was lower across the board. And then I did talk to John today, and he said, at least the one over the tennis court, you know, the town crew can take that down, but he needs the highway department's equipment, and he needs the highway department's labor. You know, with everything that he has going on, he doesn't even have the equipment to do it in the first place. And second of all, he could, if we want the town workers to take it down, he needs help with labor. He doesn't have a bucket truck or a chipper, and he's got two employees and a festival this weekend and everything else that he has to do.
We all work together, so equipment's available for John.
Okay. How about manpower?
He doesn't have to ask permission for that stuff. And I already told him a month ago that we would take it down.
Okay.
He doesn't have to ask for equipment. I don't like that they try, you guys try to divide the departments like that. That's not right.
Well, it's hard, I'm not going to debate you on this, especially without John here. I'm not trying to...
You're dividing departments. That's exactly what you're doing.
Okay, that's enough, please.
So Louis, if you were to work with John...
No, no, thank you.
Tina's just asking a question.
Okay, go ahead.
I think if Louis could get ahold of John and get it taken down.
We talked about it a month ago.
Could you get it scheduled and get it on the...
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll get on the agenda and get that...
You'll contribute manpower to it as well.
Absolutely, I told him I'd send the whole thing.
Okay, okay, great.
I'm sorry, we're, so we're not, so we're just missing these proposals, and we're going with the town?
No.
Only on the one tree.
We're doing, we will do the one over the tennis courts. The ones that are, I think, on the tree line are out of our league. They're too dangerous for us.
And at this point, I think we should make a decision on moving ahead and make a resolution on a second, for it to get it taken down.
Great, great. Well, I think one bid is considerably lower than the other.
I'll make the resolution to proceed forward with the lower bid, which at this point seems to be Precision Tree. I have no problem with that.
And John is authorized to finalize whatever is needed to get the job done and scheduling and things like that. Any town help that he might want. I think that's appropriate.
And we were gonna do it, I believe, just so it's in the resolution. They were just gonna drop the tree and John was gonna clean it up, correct?
No, no, the bid is for them to clean it up. And again, John doesn't feel that he has the manpower to do it with everything else on his plate as far as cleaning it up.
So what are the numbers, if we can put that on the record? No, no, just read it, put it on the record.
It's a little hard to understand the second bid. The first one is 2,500 for them to be taken down and cleaned up. The other one, I have to do some quick math, but it looks, doing this math quickly, it looks like it's 6,000?
I thought the 2,500 was dropping only, but...
No, not according to this, says cleaned up.
Yeah, it's 1,500 for the ground. Put it on the ground, 2,500 with the cleaned up. Yes. So, and then he bid 1,000 for the tennis court, but we've taken that off the table. Can I see the other bid, please?
Sure.
So what's happened, everybody, is we've received two bids for the taking down of the trees. One is from Precision Tree Service for $1,500 to drop a couple of very large white pine trees that seem to be risking a neighboring piece of property if they were to fall. And so that's 1,500 to drop it on the ground, 2,500 to clean it up. The second proposal we got was from Jim Kelly, Professional Arborist, which is $1,500 to drop the two white pine takedown only, and fully removed was 2,000, that's the 20-inch. Then there's a 36-inch white pine, which is takedown, which is 2,000. And full removal would have been 2,500.
So 4,500.
That's $4,500 is the total amount as the bid that we got from Jim Kelly, and we have Precision Tree for $1,500 just to drop both of them onto the ground. So we're heading in the direction, asking Precision Tree to go ahead and do the job, and authorize John to follow up and make sure that the paperwork's in order in terms of insurance and things like that, too.
So 2,500 for full removal.
For full removal? Okay, yeah.
Okay, so the resolution's gonna be move forward and accept Precision Tree, the bid of $2,500 to take down and clean it up.
Thank you.
Roll call vote?
Yes, absolutely.
Tim?
No, I guess not. Yes, oh, can we pay for this using bed hacks instead of trees? They are in the park.
I'm not in favor of that, it's nothing to do with tourism.
Okay.
So you said yes?
Yeah, I said yes.
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'm sorry, gentlemen, can you, please, it's hard for us to contract, sorry, thank you.
Facility use form, has that been completed? I'm just following up.
What, we need to do some insurance? Yeah, I did not send out the insurance information, but anyway, we have approved it provisionally. It's been used once already. Tina, thank you.
You're welcome.
And so I guess, yeah, well, just, here's, here's my issue, just personally speaking. I just got a contract from the county that really is only a one-page contract, and then there's 12 pages of insurance horse crap in it. And I'm a little worried about, I know we want to make sure the town's covered, but I had used some of the county language for the insurance provisions and some of the other ad hoc events, but my own personal tastes, I'm certainly gonna take it, it's a little over egging, and maybe I'll do something a little simpler, but that's what happened. It's like, I said, what the heck are we doing following this county wording is? So, hey Casey, I'd be happy to do that, and then, and then I'll circulate it to the board.
Thank you.
Excuse me. You brought up the resolution, who seconded it? Did anybody second it?
One.
The trees?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Doug, it's still your report.
Just to circle back to the Grant House, which is the house next door. I'm not really up to speed on this, every, all the information I have is secondhand. My understanding is that Mrs. Grant, her will has not been found, and the taxes have not been paid in several years, and it's going up for tax auction in October or November.
Correct. We have a copy of the will, Roy obtained a copy of the will, and the will copies of the first. But the provision provided that Mrs. Grant would devise the property to her sister and to Tyler. And the issue for Tyler is he's got a disability, and he may actually have a legal guardian appointed by a court out in Buffalo, which kind of tricks up the due process that the county would have to provide him. So they're kind of, if we could find out whether they do have one, blah, blah, blah. So the county's kind of hemming and hawing because they know that... But the county will decide whether to, that they've done enough process and proceed with the tax foreclosure or not. I mean, I think my own sort of, sort of hope is that it's probably a piece of property that would, it's nicely with the Essex County Land Bank and their efforts to rehabilitate single-family homes and make them affordable housing for people. And I've been in touch with Nicole Justice Green, who's the head of the Essex County Land Bank, to have her start looking at the tax information on that property. And I would probably suggest that the board for next year or something like that, if they wanted to proceed in that direction, that that's kind of the way to go. So it's kind of up in the air right now, so the county decides what to do with their tax foreclosure rights. And then going forward, the town could probably step in in some way and help facilitate a single-family home project from the Essex County Land Bank. That's my update, I'm...
Thank you.
Is Mrs. Grant's sister still alive? No idea. I mean, I don't, I don't, I only have a file, and I just talk to people about it.
Yes.
Tyler's the only one left. I think Tyler's the only one left, and that's why it's through lawyers and stuff. It's the last of them.
If it's going up for tax auction, and the town wants to do something with it, maybe we should think about, think about that. Otherwise, someone else can buy it at the tax auction.
Correct. So if you want me to continue to nose around, stick my oar in, something like that at the county, and then report back to the board about what we're doing, that'd be fine?
I think I would.
I think that's something we have to do very soon, do that before the 13th of October.
Yeah, no, 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 I've got, my mic is gonna, I sent out a little, you know, note to town supervisors about, make sure you check the properties on your, on the list from your towns, and get back to me if you have any questions. So, yeah, the board wants me to do that in the meantime, I'll be happy to.
Yes, I will, yep. Is it, is the tax auction in October or November? We don't know.
I think...
Later.
Yeah, the drop dead day for us is, the redemption stuff is in October.
Yeah, we have to, for October for that.
I do get a lot of questions about the homestead housing. So just for my own clarity and for other people's clarity, the people who ask me about it, I guess my first question is, does Adirondack Roots, the money they need to move forward, do they have the money they need, do they have...
I'm gonna say no.
Okay.
Megan Murphy, the director of Adirondack Roots, announced her resignation in Monday's meeting. So they are in a little bit of flux. I think from the town's point of view, when we're going into the budget season, we need to... It's like an anti, you know, they're looking to see the town put in. We've paid out the Northern Borders Grant, and we filed for closing it out and get the final reimbursement from that. So the next step would still be planning and development. And because the town proposed to reserve the back nine acres near the route, near the river as, as a park, I think it's appropriate for the town, the town to... For the town to perhaps, they could perhaps use end tax money as a reserve. But a part of the budget idea is, I'm gonna suggest is part of the budget, that we start setting up a reserve account to help cover some of the expenses that any future developer, I mean, if we, if the town decides that Adirondack Roots may not be able to do this project, then, as I said, Essex County Land Grant is, Land Bank has been working very hard, and they've gotten a lot of successful grant programs and things like that. They may have the energy to help town, help them maybe out with the project. But from our point of view, the next step would be to adjust the budget of property and set up some sort of a reserve fund, so we're showing everyone else that Wilmington's sort of ready, willing, and able to proceed with the project.
Okay.
So that's the update for those guys.
Okay, thanks. The youth committee, I have to report that because of the way the last meeting went, I feel that Amy was ambushed, I mean, everyone else can feel however they want about it. But the youth committee's on pause at best. The treasurer has resigned. They'd like it if the money that was donated was returned to the people who donated it, and they're on pause for the foreseeable future. They won't be running the ski program, someone else has to run the ski program. And that's, that's, I think that's everything I have to say, that's my report. Thank you. Thank you all for coming. Thanks, Matt.
All right. Thank you, Tim, the next one's Darren.
I don't have a lot to report, just a couple of questions that I have for members of the audience. Charlie, can you tell us a little bit about the ambulance and loaning that to Osable, just so everybody's aware, and how that process worked?
Okay, we do have it, and we put it into service today, we got it back yesterday. Fully stocked, and the reason we had to, they brought it back stocked, but we had taken all of our equipment, the defibrillators, the drugs, everything out. So that's all restocked and back in service. Neighboring town didn't have an ambulance, both of those were down, so we just...
So my question about that is, since it is a neighboring town, I understand it's, you know, Osable Forks. But am I correct by saying that's a private ambulance service rather than a municipal ambulance service like ours?
I really can't answer that because they work with their town board, but I'm not sure how it's... I mean, they do have their own directors.
Okay, I just, basically what I'm getting at is I just want to make sure, you know, that the town is protecting our investments with our ambulance and things like that. And when we let Whiteface or anybody else, we get some type of reimbursement out of that. So I just want to make sure that, you know, the Board of Commissioners is thinking about that type of thing, especially if it's a, you know, paid ambulance service down there in a private company rather than just another municipality, that, you know, we think about that type of thing.
Yeah, I'll bring that up at the next meeting. We didn't, because I just, I personally am not gonna leave a town without them.
Yeah.
And as far as reimbursement, they're the ones doing the calls, so they get the money for the...
And we had some type of insurance agreement, like if our ambulance was to get wrecked or whatever?
They're totally, they break it, they bother.
Okay. Okay. I just wanted to get some clarification on that, thank you.
Could I ask what the length of time it was on loan for, what?
A couple of weeks, maybe three.
Okay.
I mean, we were, we talked about it the last meeting, what was that, the regular meeting?
August 12th was our last one.
Oh, it was, it was a month.
Thank you.
Well, it was August 12th, yeah, almost another one.
And then my other questions are mostly for Louis, I could have brought it up during your report. But, you know, moving into winter, we know your sand is stockpiled and things like that. Is there anything that you see coming up as far as repairs, whether it be tires or equipment or anything that we have on the radar? So both when we're doing our budget and when we can figure out how much that we have left coming up over the next couple of months, just so we can kind of plan and figure this out?
Yeah, I have a lower-than-eat tires before the snow flies, which I already got close on that, and it's like $6,500. And then I have a tandem that's gonna need tires too before, actually, I could get to the first of the year with that, but those are the two big things I see ahead.
And so we're looking at probably 12 grand between the pair?
Yeah, you're looking at probably seven for the tandem, and then the 6,500 for the loader.
And then as far as...
Soft sand's all done, we have our stuff.
Cutting edges and everything like that, we're good?
Yeah, actually, there's a bit of cutting edge order, which takes like a month to get, so... Also spare chains I ordered from Viking. And then we have just all the minor repairs and stuff. We're just, we're now painting plows, plow frames. Actually, for the Festival of Colors, I'm gonna put a truck together and let the kids take pictures in it and look at them, and then we'll end up bringing the mini loader we bought over there, we'll all attach it to the vehicle to display. Those are the two biggest things I have this year. For the first, before the first of the year, the loader tires are gonna need to be done.
And remind us, I mean, I know you gave us the list, I just don't have it right in front of me, again, just for budget items coming up. Was there anything in the replacement schedule for next year?
Next year is supposed to be the 2016 truck to be replaced, but after the first of the year. But the, if you start now, you're lucky if you see it in three, two to three years. So after the first of the year, the chuck should be, a new chuck should be specked out, and then not expect it for another two to three years. So that is on the schedule to be replaced.
Okay. And other than that, do you see any upcoming issues?
No, everything...
The one culvert that we've had issues with as far as replacement and things out on John Bliss Road, do we have any updates on that?
So actually, I don't know if anybody drove by it on John Bliss Road. You go down in that dip, and then you come back out in the middle of it. That culvert's caving in, we've been fixing it for years. I've been working with the Freshwater Center here in town. They got, gave us a $300,000 grant. So we did test holes a couple of weeks ago for it. So if you saw, we were digging over there. So we're scheduled for beginning of June next year to replace that culvert. They're doing most of the cost. In exchange, we are gonna do the hauling, hauling of the material, blacktopping it, and all that, because it's, it's a $300,000 bottomless over, fish friendly, so they're covering most of the costs, and we're giving labor, trucking, and then we'll blacktop it with our blacktop money. That's scheduled for beginning of June next year.
Okay. Thank you, Louis, and thank you for helping with the tree, too. Appreciate it.
Did anybody get permission, so with that tree that we're gonna take care of, it's actually accessing it through private property. Did anybody get... Did anybody get permission to go on that property?
I don't know anything about it, so.
It's something that will have to work.
Yeah, let, let me find out more.
Yeah, because it's on the left side of the court and that's on somebody else's property, not the town. So we'd have to access the bucket truck, chipper, all that stuff on somebody else's property. I don't even know where it is.
Well, it'd either probably be Cliff or Matt. It's not, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we need to have permission.
Sure.
To access that.
I don't know where the lines are from. Thank you for telling me.
And then Peter, can you give us an update on playground equipment? Has there been any progress with that?
Uh, well, uh, the progress, the playground, of course, is here. Um, I have, uh, John is, uh, uh, you know, we probably need to coordinate with the highway department to get the playground equipment installed. Uh, the person who lives in, in the acres, Kirk, Kirk Baumann, who was, uh, inexperienced, he was still, he was the contact originally for the, uh, for the proposal, uh, has reached out to me and offered himself to come over and help with the, because he has a lot more know-how on putting together playground equipment and stadium steps and things, but that's not really my, uh, so basically I'll contact Kurt and I'm just hoping that John and Louis at some point will, take a few minutes to figure out when they want to schedule it and where they want to site it.
We talked about the ball.
Yep. So, yeah, so I'll get ahold of this guy and have him coordinate with you guys, because he could probably come over and, you know, I know with my own personal experience, if somebody gives me a set of instructions on paper and stuff, I'll never be able to get it together. John's probably better than I am, but I think it'd be nice if Kurt could.
And then, uh, the last thing is just kind of, uh, to get people's opinion and maybe just spitball it a little bit. Is we had talked about a way for, um, to memorialize certain people that worked for the town or whatever. And I saw in a, in a town, um, here in New York State, but I can't remember exactly where it was, is they actually order granite benches. And, you know, we have, you know, plenty of places in town where we have benches and some need to be replaced or whatever. So I thought that maybe we could order some of these granite benches in the future and have names engraved in them. And it basically is going to become permanent because they would never rot or fall apart. So I just thought that that might be one possible way for, uh, us to memorialize some of those people when we're looking for different items. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura?
Um, a couple of questions. Um, I still haven't seen the transfers that I asked about in middle of the year about the transfers for the, um, three resolutions about the money being transferred into the truck fund and, uh, general, general into the water, uh, the transfer completion forms and the balances on those accounts.
Huh?
I have a notebook that'll show you those. Nicole has them there too. Right, and the accounts haven't changed. None of the account, none of, none of these show any transfers on them.
We'll follow up.
Ask Nicole about that, but I know she does have the papers.
You've got to use your form. Okay.
I know I signed some residential forms, so I don't know what's happening.
Okay. Probably just not looking for them to be placed.
Well, we don't know. We'll find out.
Well, either way, on the form, it says it should be placed in the board members' mailboxes. We didn't do that. Okay. Thank you. Um, the drywall repair did from June, we didn't end up discussing anymore on that.
That's similarly, uh, it's kind of what, uh, like with the trees, right? We got one quote, but we don't have necessarily the second quote. And then somebody said that maybe we should do the whole, uh, ceiling downstairs instead of just the repair area. So it, it kind of got slowed down as a result of a lot of discussion.
So we'll get another quote or we're, we're tabling it?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm tabling it. We'll get another quote and try to get the whole fixed.
Okay. Um, with the tree, the tennis court, are we going to do steel coating on the courts or is that?
I have information about that.
Oh.
Okay, I'll share the information. Um, and the information I have is vague, uh, but I talked to John about it a month ago. And he said that there's another method other than seal coating that he thinks would work better. And he's looking into it and that's all I know. That's all I can tell you.
Okay.
I asked, I called him because I was thinking about bringing it up at the last meeting because I realized that it hadn't been done yet. And I wanted to push it forward and he said, no, there's, I'm looking into something else. So that's all I know about that.
Didn't we have a whole discussion on the steel coating?
Yeah, we, we discussed it.
That's what I thought. We had a whole discussion one minute on the steel coating and what we could use and what's the best type and, yeah.
We haven't spoke, but I don't know that we did anything with it.
Maybe we can ask him to come to the work session.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, it definitely should be done. So, and the other thing was, was he wanted to wait till the tree was taken out to do it and.
Yeah, because we discussed which one was the best and which way, direction you want to go in.
Yes, yep.
Finally, I have a, a proposal from a part-time, um, resident that has a suggestion for the town to have a little free art gallery similar to the, the little free library that we have at the, um, little supermarket and at the, um, Methodist church. And so they sent me this. They want to remain anonymous at this time, but, um, I said that I would bring it forward and facilitate any way that I could. Essentially, they want to do a little free art gallery. It's a small community focused public art project. Essentially, it would be a small weatherproof box on a stand similar to the one that is there, but this one would be rubberized, so it wouldn't need maintenance. The one that they're suggesting, I could be wrong, but it looks like it's weighted with sand, so it doesn't need to be on a, um, cement block or anything. The purpose of it is to create a small welcoming art gallery with tiny little art projects, uh, that could be shared with creativity and appreciation of the arts. They have a proposal. I can share it with anyone virtually, but for the board, the, what they're asking for is it's a take art, leave art, inspire art concept. And community members are encouraged to either put little drawings or paintings or little sculptures or mugs that they make or anything in there. And then it would be something that people could either take or leave. There would be possibly a group of volunteers that would work with upkeep or rotating art. If anyone was interested, they can reach out to me and I can help coordinate things. The, it would be a 24/7 free accessibility, possibility of places to put it. I don't know if the library, they said outside the, it's written that outside the town library or the community center or the post office, but I don't know about any other options where this might go. The cost that they're looking for, or if the town would subsidize it or they would pay for it privately, would be $170 for the stand. And it is available on amazon.com. And I did tell this person that we do have an Amazon account.
Yep.
So you don't have, just passing this along as I was asked to and want the board's feedback on it.
Thank you. We have Heritage Park. I mean, there's something, you know, there are places in town where, um, you know, uh, it seems to me like we have a lot of traffic when, uh, when they have the search door open, uh, parking there, uh, families and kids. And, you know, it's feasible, of course, uh, but it strikes me as a, a possible location too.
I mean, this strikes me as something that the community enhancement money could truly go towards and, and what it's supposed to be used towards. So, I mean, I would encourage if we did something like this through the community enhancement funds, because that's what that money is intended for, is projects like this.
Can I make a resolution to proceed with this, um, using approximately $170 paid for through the town's account, but taken from the community enhancement fund?
Yeah, if you could identify who the people are to us too. Not necessarily, we'll have to do it publicly, so you give them a heads up. But yeah, you know, we do these kind of general resolutions, so you can let us know, tell you the details. Tim?
The only thing I worry, I do worry a little bit about upkeep and if they really are going to be committed to keeping an eye on it and making sure that it doesn't just become some abandoned thing that is.
Well, I think for the size of it, which is, uh, 21 by 21 base, I think for 170 bucks, if it gets abandoned in a year or two, it's not like it's the end of the world.
And if there's any issues, we can all refer you.
Exactly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so it's resolution.
She's making.
I made the resolution.
We are spending money, so we should probably do the roll call, right?
Tim's second. Uh, any further discussion or questions about it? Roll call vote, please.
Tim?
Yes.
You're up.
Yes.
Laura?
Yeah.
Tina?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Tina?
So library now meets the second Wednesday of the month, is the, the third Wednesday. And let's see, they're going to start their third Thursday fall sessions, um, shortly, and they'll get out the program for that. And they want to remind everybody that they'll be at the festival colors this Saturday and they'll be giving away kids giveaways. They'll be giving away a project where the kids can take it and take it home and make off some type of arts and crafts. And they'll also be introducing individuals to the Libby program where you can stop and find out how you can sign on to join the Libby program.
What is the Libby program?
It's part of the reading, where your library program where you can get books and stuff off of there.
Okay, thank you.
And then also remind everybody that we have the, the tree coming up on October 26th and that'll be at the Kaway across from the beach. If anybody wants to sign up for a book for that. And back to what Darren just mentioned about the memorial, um, whatever we're going to do for the memorial, walkway, benches, whatever we might want to do. I talked to community resources today out in E-Town. They said what we really should start to do to think about this project is put a committee together or our board together and make some plans. Draw up a plan, draw up what we want to do, what our decision is going to do, put that type into a program, um, make a plan. And then decide from there to see if there's any parks, grants or recreation grants or something that they might be able to help us with. Grants are coming up all the time. Right now, they don't know the grant, but they, if there is one that comes up, they will also help us write it. They'll do the grant with us and see what they can find for money. So right now, we should really, um, decide what we want to do or how we want to do it on, or form, if we want to do it as a board to do the program, or if we want to form a committee and have that committee be community members and help do that. What the board feels we should do to figure out what type of memorial we want to do, if we want to do what Darren said of memorial benches and do engraving. Or do we want to do like a wall, maybe down at Preston Field, put some type of wall up and then put the engraving signs on them that we talked about from Mormons with the names or something on them. I talked to the DOT. I talked to George. He sent me over to a bridge and maintenance, uh, Hans. And I left Hans three messages and he's not getting back to me. I honestly think the bridge is going to be an option because if at any time they have to do repairs on it, that's really going to take away anything that we have begun. So that's not really.
Okay, Tina, um, in a lot of places, um, they do a flagpole and bricks around it and they put the name, the date they started, the date they ended and retired, and they do the bricks around flagpoles.
Yeah. Because we're not only going to do, I don't think, from what I gather from what we've all talked here, it's not just going to be the members that work for the town. It's going to be anybody that wants to put something there to memorize anybody in town. Because, um, we want to absolutely memorialize the ones who work for the town, that put the service in, the dedication. Remember everybody for the work they did for the town, but also the volunteers and the people who volunteered as well. And what made Wilmington what it is, you know, all the hard work that went in. So, so would it be the walkway, like you said, the bricks around the flagpole? Would it be something like, well, Osablety with the walkway there, or do we do a wall? This is something that we're trying to figure out what to do, be able to memorize and memorialize the people of the town.
Any other board comments?
What did they, oh, excuse me, what did they do for the time capsule? Any, did you model into that or you could look at that as an example? We have a time capsule.
Yes, we did that in Preston Field, but that was done by a private committee. And it doesn't have a spot on it where you could put anything like that.
I think you could do a combination. I mean, like the bench idea, like flagpole, I mean, you've got a lot of people and you've got a lot of stuff.
Well, one of the, uh, one of the, uh, specific, uh, uh, powers that, uh, supervisors that chair of the board can do is appoint, uh, a committee of two board members to, uh, undertake, uh, so get together the information, the costs, proposals, and then I'll come back with a recommendation. So, uh, we'd, I'd be happy to appoint two people with, uh, this board. Uh, that'd probably be quicker than sending out requests for all people to sign on to another committee, uh, like that in the public, but that's up to the board. I mean, that way you could do that pretty quickly, uh, and then get that started. Any other reports you have talked about?
Yeah, no, that's, that's that part. And then, um, the next thing is, um, NYSERDA, um, I got E20, uh, solar on earth, if you want to pass them over. This is a program from the electric company. I just made these copies tonight. And on the back of the electric bill, it's coming down through, on their, um, electric supply charges, you'll see where they charge it for the electric supply. They're going to what this program does. This is a free of charge program. And this gentleman had come to us and he did a program and paid, and then he also ran the program from Wilmington for us. And if you guys want to take this and look it over for the month, then we can discuss it next month. But it's free to sign up. It's free to be part of it. What it does is it takes these, it's part of this charge here for the solar program. And they give you back a percentage on all your electric bills. All you have to do is Nicole would send over all our electric bills. And they would calculate it and give us an average of what we would save. And on an average, we'd probably save a hundred to $200 a month that they would give us a reimbursement for, to Wilmington on our electric charge. And it's free to sign up and it doesn't cost us anything. It's part of the clean energy act. So if we wanted to, if you guys want to look that over and if you have any questions, come back and.
Can we invite?
And we can even invite him to come. We could invite Scott to come and visit us. He'd be more happy to sit down with us. And just as a reminder that, um, the F S Town.
This is to convert our street lights to solar? Is that?
No, this is just, this is just a program that is giving us credit on our electric, that we have already, on our electric charges down here. Right here, where you receive the, um, energy supply company, the charges, the energy supply charges.
Okay, AD865?
Yep, and that, that's the charges that are going to give you credit towards those charges. That's the, where they charge you and that's where the clean energy charge portion comes in. So I can have Scott come in and talk to us and explain the program to you, but it's free of charge. And, um, we would just get money back on our bill every month that would come back to the town.
In exchange for what?
It's just a program that the clean energy has. They're trying to get the word out there and trying to help get all this help. And they're going to all the towns and working with all the towns to get it up in the bill.
Well, that sounds good.
Yes, um, save money. Perfect. And just remind everybody that this is kind of a location presentation. It is Monday, September 22nd, 2:30 to 5:30. And it's all on the planning, um, youth codes, um, looking at and reviewing, um, comprehensive, zoning. and it's all on the planning, youth codes, looking at, reviewing, comprehensive, zoning revisions, discussions, procedures, amendments. So, if anybody wants to go on that, out in Essex County.
What date?
That's on the twenty-second, two-thirty to five-thirty. I'll make you a copy of this, if you want it. And the other thing is the chalk walk. The county's actually popping on too, they popped on with the chalk walk for the Essex County, it's wide awareness project. September is the suicide prevention month, and I host a suicide prevention walk in Lake Placid every year on September twentieth, it'll be this year. And we have a big walk to go, and we're having vendors, we have Frank and Moonlight playing one to three, open to the public. We have raffles. All money raised stays in Essex County. And it helps anybody that needs services with any type of anxiety, depression, suicidal thoughts, anybody that's had loss from suicide. We're losing a lot of people to overdose and just a lot of different things. So, Essex County now came out with their suicide prevention, and because it's the tenth leading cause of death and the second leading cause of death in ages ten to thirty-four, we're losing even kids younger now. So, they are now come up with a thing in Essex County that they would like you to mark on any chalkboards that you have, any sidewalks you have. It's okay not to be okay, break the silent, let's talk, you're strong. So, anything you have that you just want to mark up for September, Essex County would love to see it elsewhere. And if you have any and you need any chalk, I have some.
No, no, I grabbed a bag of it yesterday.
And Faber has some too.
So, there's more, there's more here, more here in the town.
If you wanna, can't put on your way out, I have them. Because we're losing kids younger and younger. It's just, it's a hard world we live in. One of the boards that I serve on, surveys that we've done, we find that children are suffering more because parents are either losing jobs, or there's been parents fight about how they can't reach the bills, or they're losing housing. It's just more, getting more and more woolly school, so anything that we can do is really, really important to help. And then just a reminder about the Festival of Colors, it's this weekend, and I think that's pretty much all I had right now.
Got a question?
Oh, I do have one more question. Louis?
Yeah.
Louis, do you have a lot of tires over eighteen inch up there?
Yes.
What do you do with them?
Oh, they're in a big pile. Every now and then the county does like a free tire day and stuff, so we'll load up the truck.
Okay.
And haul it for them. But other than that, we have a big pile behind or how we do.
Okay.
We used to years ago take them to a place called Wheelup Raider in the Hudson Valley, but I don't think they gave them anymore.
I just wonder what, because I found out what the cost of them are now, right now, to get rid of the tires over eighteen inch right now, and now costs five hundred dollars.
Wow.
So, you know, prices are going up as well, so.
There are costs out there, we see the amount, the cost, but you table how many people that's worth.
Yeah, they're getting harder and harder right now, but now people are looking at maybe getting shredders and, you know, to cut them themselves or stuff, so these are things that
Yeah, we probably pick up in a month, probably eight tires on the value of it.
So, that, yeah, so that's what's happening, so those are things that we have to look out and think about.
I had a question, just whether if we can get an update from the Visitors Bureau about, I know Colin resigned, and I personally don't know what has happened since then and what the plan is going forward, so.
The plan is we're open every, but we're switching our hours, so we're open Saturday through, well, Saturdays we're open until from ten to two, and then Sunday and Tuesdays we're closed, and the rest of the week we're open from ten to two. Our Festival of Colors is going off without a hitch at this point. We'll have lots of things for kids to do all day long, and just, it'll be a great day for people. There's vendors, there's Hipsqueak Clown, there's all kinds of fun to happen on, on our, on our day that we, and there's a cupcake war. We have several people already pre-registered. Sue Hocker has kind of taken that as her little baby, and she's done a great job, so just everybody come on Saturday and enjoy yourselves.
Are you going to hire another director?
We are looking. We have not had anybody bite at this point in time, so we're just kind of going with who we have. Charlie works three days a week, and Barb Hotford.
You can see the Friday, there's a really cool guy there after any of your questions. I'm gonna believe you be true.
Barb Hotford, who does Saturday and Monday. We just, we want to be there for the people, so, you know, myself and Sarah and the rest of the board are all putting our time in to make sure emails are returned, et cetera, so.
Hey, I will tell you, it's been a busy summer, and we'll roll this down.
Is there a job posting?
Yes, there is a job posting on Facebook. We are waiting till we get done with the festival in order to send it to Indi at this point in time. We just haven't had any interest.
Tina, answer.
Youth commission, should we be looking to hire somebody for the youth program on Sunday to pay somebody and for the fourth ski program?
Well, you know, to me, to me, I think what's happened is we're gonna have to commit to, I'm gonna estimate thirty to forty thousand dollars in the budget to create the youth program that people seem to envision and discuss before. I mean, these kinds of things are part of the budget for next year. We don't have the budgeted now, so we can't hire it. You know, we're looking to hire somebody now, but we haven't budgeted for it, so it seems to me we got a budget first. Hold on a second. Go ahead, question, please.
Going back to this job posting conversation, on the site, it says that there will be jobs posted there, but there never are.
Well, the Visitors Bureau is sort of different.
But the town is also looking for people for certain things.
Not yet, I mean, we're discussing it, but we, we posted when we wanted people to help out this summer, we posted when we wanted lifeguards and things like that. So, those get posted, but right now, the Visitors Bureau is its own sort of entity, and
If someone is interested, we stop at the Visitors Bureau and talk to them.
Yeah, so we try our best to post.
It might be interesting to somehow put something on our website, but this is
Sure.
Just a thought.
All right, Tina? Finished?
If that was your, I just wanted to know if that was, should hire somebody for the ski program?
No, I just think we got a budget. I mean, we, I know it's December and stuff like that, but maybe we can talk about it during some of our budgets or discussions, but we have things to do.
Are you thinking year round?
But that's
Well, if you're going to.
All right, well, pardon me.
January.
Yeah, no, I know. So, we'll have to get, get down the horse. So, my report is, my, wow, what the hell, I'll just talk about one thing. So, on the agenda tonight is the Essex County EMS stabilization funding application. Essex County has decided, had decided because New York State added a sales tax to short-term rentals this year, starting, starting in February, March. Essex County has decided that they are going to take what they anticipate to be one point eight million dollars in sales tax revenue. And they came up with a program whereby they would give money towards those municipalities that seem to have been doing a very good job on their own for a long period of time with handling the communities' ambulance and medical emergency needs. And one of the communities that sort of matches way the county's looking at it is Wilmington. So, they are, Wilmington will need to apply for this in the next month or so, and they will pay us a hundred thousand dollars one time to Wilmington to help pay for the cost of the daytime and nighttime EMS coverage that we have. They looked at other communities, there are certain communities that really are quite reliant on county EMS services. And they realized that there was certain unfairness to the counties that really haven't asked for too much EMS services because they've managed to do their own, Akeen, North Alba, Ten Armond even. And so, they decided that it's probably best if the, if the governor and the legislature are gonna add an additional sales tax to those kinds of room sales, that they could use those funds to help pay for some of these communities with their EMS. They're toward mostly labor costs, Wilmington qualifies for the first, for the whole hundred thousand according to the preliminary numbers that we have with the county. Though, another authorization will, on the new business will be to authorize, the board will be authorizing me to continue with the application to keep them posted and showing up, you know, get the application together, and I can submit it on behalf of the town board. One of the things that it's, it's gonna evolve because New York State changes its requirements on, you know, we could get an additional twenty-five thousand dollars if we have advanced life savings for twenty-four seven, seven days a week. But we don't quite reach that point yet, so it's something the town can aspire to, is to get to make sure they have the right kind of paramedics and people who are qualified, so that they, but the county is at, you know, trying to incentivize the town into going into that direction. One of the interesting things that we, yesterday we had the EMS committee, we talked about, is the number of calls that Whiteface Wilmington responds to for people who have been injured on the top of Whiteface. And so, you know, it isn't just our citizens who live here year-round who recall, who need the EMS services, it's a lot of visitors are counting on us, and we've never really, we've never let them down. Our answer, our call answering is fabulous. And we go up to the top of Whiteface when some out of shape person, you know, just slip and fall and injure themselves on top. And they're not, and sales tax is the perfect way to fund instead of a local property tax, which is just a big suck and stuff. So, the county recognizes that, and it's trying to do, do, do right by the communities, and also to encourage us to get more help, because eventually the state's gonna say, oh, we have to have all this, this and this, and, you know, it's very difficult right now to be a volunteer EMS or firefighter. You know, we're very lucky. Our town shows a lot of enthusiasm, a lot of people committed, and it's, it's nice to see. So, that's, that's on that, that's my report. Thank you. Okay, so we'll go down to the new business. I sent, I hope you've got copies of a map. This is just, we used, the town board used to have a thing called correspondence on the agenda, where they got new correspondence. This is just basically correspondence. I'm not, I don't think the town board's in a position to do anything about it. We have a property owner on top of Quaker Mountain, he approached me to say, what the heck's happened into my, my boundary line? I think the town road is starting to take over too much. I said, how do I know? You know, can you give me a survey? So, he got the survey, and he came and met with me, and that's a copy I hope you all have, I don't seem to have mine in front of me.
It was in the email. I don't have it in paper, but I can see it in the email.
Okay, so we'll, we'll put a copy in the paper. Louis knows about it too, and something we just gonna, I mean, he, he wanted me to handshake and agree to fix it. And I said, that's just not the way town works, I can't, you know, I don't know anything about it, so. It's gonna be a process, it's also, you know, it's the fall of an election year, and so I'm not sure, and I didn't promise him anything would get done immediately because it'll take time to figure out what to do. So, in any case, so Louis and I have talked about it, I gave it to you, that's just more FYI. But you think the town road is encroaching?
I don't know. It's a dirt road, so when you rake them and stuff, I mean, but the road is there because actually the residence is on a hill. So, when you rake it and stuff, we're not actually taking the hill out, you know, as part of the road in there. So, yeah, I don't use it really.
Hasn't there always been a little bit of confusion discussion about the exact right of way up there anyway?
So, legally, all right of ways are twenty feet from the center line? That's a dirt road.
Exactly.
New York State doesn't even recognize dirt roads anymore, so. The hill, the property is just a huge hill, so we're not taking any of the road, or the hill out. It's all grass, it looks fine, that's just, I don't know, maybe this person's also gonna dispute with their neighbor too, so.
Ooh.
I think it's been ongoing problem.
Is it basically at the top of that dirt road there, is that?
Yeah, you go, so it goes around to the other side.
Okay.
It's that dirt road. You go around the sharp, down the hill, around the sharp corner, and it's the big house on top of the hill.
I haven't been on in a few years at least, so.
Yeah, the road's still in the same spot, we haven't widened it or anything, so.
That's FYI. Came to talk to me, I gave him a copy of the survey, and, you know, more further discussion as time goes on. Next thing on the agenda is, I gave copies of the contract, these are annual service contracts for our generators for the water systems. Eddie has asked us to approve it and authorize, I mean, to sign it or whatever, agree to it.
I don't remember that.
I don't think we see a copy. Or digital.
Okay.
It's something that Eddie asks for every year, and it's something that has to be done to keep our generators running for our water system, so I'm gonna go ahead and make that resolution that we approve those service contracts, because it's preventive maintenance, and that's something that we can't get behind on.
There's a resolution there. Tina, seconds, we're, let them, let them look it over. Obviously, I don't disagree with you one bit there, and I'd just like to at least look at something before I vote on it.
Did you guys see it?
I've seen them.
I've seen them too, because it's something that Eddie does every year.
You've seen that?
It's the same contract as every year.
So, there's six of them total? Six, four hundred and seventy-five dollars? I think maybe that's all the ones that you were supposed to be handing out.
Every competition has.
Yeah.
Oh, it's been six.
Water plant.
Roll call vote, or are we?
No, that, 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 okay. It looks like it's what Louis just said, four seventy-five for each. Obviously, I'm just barely scanning this, but, okay. Okay, so it's the end of discussion, roll call vote, please.
Yeah.
Yes.
Your answer?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
And David?
Yes. Thank you.
I'm gonna need a copy of that.
Sure. Okay. Next is the resolution authorizing supervisor to pursue the application for the EMS county EMS stabilization funding application. I'll make it. Darren, second, Tina, any questions?
This is what you were referring to with the sales tax?
Yes, that's what I just talked about.
Yep, I just wanted to make sure the terminology, thank you. Are you doing I or are you doing local?
No, it's just a I, it's just a I. So, is any other questions or discussions? All those in favor?
Hi.
I pose, here. And next is the new business is the budget workshops, November regular meeting. So, turning to the law, the budget calendar for this year is, we have, the departments must report to Nicole by September twentieth, two thousand twenty-five. Nicole must present to, present to Dawn, deliver to Dawn, the tentative budget by nine-thirty, two thousand twenty-five. I'm going to request that we do a special meeting, accepting the tentative budget on ten-one, which is on a Wednesday, that we can do six or four or whatever you think we should do. And then we would, at that meeting, schedule our budget review. A regular meeting in October is on the fourteenth. Preliminary budget has to be approved by the twenty-ninth of October. We'd have to have a special meeting to do that. We'd have to have a special meeting to do that. Um, the twenty ninth, what, October is?
Twenty ninth of October is the Wednesday.
Yeah, so that we, that would take up our work session in October. Um, and then we have a public hearing, a special public hearing on the matter uh by uh the sixth of November. So election day is the fourth and we have to adopt by the twentieth of November. Um, so the, the, I'm going to suggest that I, I, you know, adopt the special, you know, special meetings for the first uh to uh uh accept the tentative budget and to discuss what our budget review is going to be. Uh, that we have a regular meeting and we, we need to uh schedule something between the tenth and the twenty-ninth as our budget workshop. We can do that at the special meeting. Uh, the preliminary budget on the twenty-ninth is, what did you say, on a Wednesday?
No.
Yeah, so we'll do that at the, at the, um, we could do six o'clock on the twenty-ninth as the public hearing on the budget. No, preliminary budgets do, we could just do that at four o'clock. And then at the regular work session, then we have to have the public hearing on the sixth. That's, we'll select that at six P M. And then however that goes, we can decide uh when we would want to hold the meeting to adopt a budget. The regular meeting uh for November falls on Veterans Day. So we'll need to uh, no, it doesn't. It doesn't. Yeah, so we should do the Wednesday following Veterans Day to move our regular meeting to. And I think I got that covered. So that's just sort of a discussion. I'm hoping that we can get some sort of general consensus to let us.
What time were you thinking for the first, for the budget review, October first?
Four.
Four P M?
Four P M.
I'm just, I don't know what I said, but go ahead.
Do we have the first, the twenty ninth?
Yep.
Twenty ninth, we don't, yeah, that's just our regular work session and we gotta do a meeting in between when she said we'd schedule on the first.
So should we just go for the fifteenth?
I, yeah.
With the first, fifteen from the front.
We have the regular meeting on the fourteenth. So you hear what Tina's suggesting? Instead of us discussing uh when to have our budget work session on the first, that we go to the fifteenth and just schedule it. Schedule it now. Anybody have any objections to that? No, what time? Tina?
For a public?
It's on me, I just. Meeting October first, which is replacing the September work session. Um, regular meeting October fourteenth, a special budget meeting uh the next day, the fifteenth at four. Uh, work session October twenty-ninth on the budget, public hearing November sixth. Yes, at six P M. Perfect, thank you very much.
So we're, we're not having a work session in September? I didn't hear that.
I wouldn't mind canceling it since we're meeting on the, I mean, one of the things that Tim mentioned earlier is he'd certainly like to talk to John. Uh, I think John is obviously uh needs, even though, I mean, he, he really needs to be heard on what's happening with the Parks Department, what he needs and what he expects and things like that. There's a lot of discussion about it tonight and I don't want to sort of promise that John's going to do anything until he gets to be heard.
We really, I mean, I've said it before, we still have not buttoned up. We don't know how much extra we have. We haven't finalized the end of twenty twenty-four.
What we do?
We don't know our budget.
No, no, what we have, what we have, okay, so, so the end of twenty twenty-four is finished.
Right.
That's the A F R and we have eight hundred thousand dollars of unappropriated fund balance.
Right.
So uh, we could adopt policies. I'm not inclined to do that. Uh, I don't think it's wrong. I think we can informally allocate fund balance during the budget workshop towards certain things for next year. We'll need to, I mean, if you look at this month's uh income and expense account lines, there are certain items that are over budget, but we have a contingency fund, we can move money and things like that to, to make those budget lines balanced. But in the meantime, uh, as we're heading into budget season, uh, the board will have plenty of chance to discuss. I mean, I've suggested we put money away for the, for the courtings. I've mentioned out loud how much I think the youth program can be. I mean, these are just my opinions, but uh, and if we start messing with following, as I also mentioned earlier, it's over legalized. I mean, all that county stuff. I mean, what happens with the state of New York is you adopt the policy and a, let's say a capital uh, capital reserve account. They are very specific about what's formally needed to do that. So if next year's board wants to adopt more formal policies, that's fine. This year, I think we should have the flexibility. We know what the number is, so we just have the flexibility to wing it maybe, or state, sorry, uh, and not adopt a policy right now. That would cause us more headache trying to figure out whether we're following the law on, you know, repair reserves versus tax, you know, tax relief reserves and the capital reserve and all that stuff. Uh, at the same time, we're trying to make uh big decisions on, you know, change paying for certain programs next year that are different from what.
Which is why I want to separate it. I want to button that up and separate that money and make sure everything is in a separate area so that we can focus on twenty twenty-six without thinking we have eight hundred thousand dollars that is just there.
We do have eight hundred.
I understand, but that money.
And we haven't spent, every month we sit here and we go through the bills and we know what we spent. Okay, we haven't spent, it's still there.
I think they, we have spent it.
I guess I'm confused, Laura. What is there to button up? Like that money is in our, in the town's reserve account. It'll continue to sit in the town's reserve account until we earmark it towards something.
Because it's surplus and if we have had a surplus in twenty twenty-four and we anticipate a surplus in twenty twenty-five, then we're planning on increasing the budget for twenty twenty-six when we don't even know what we have as our surplus for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. That's what I'm saying. We have no, we have these numbers that have been thrown out there and every time that we discuss the budget, we cannot compartmentalize. We're always talking about these numbers in this budget and this year and this year and what we're needing to put, put away. But, and we're increasing this and increasing this, but we have money left over. So I don't, I think that that needs to be taken care of before we discuss what we are planning on spending in twenty twenty-six.
I think what they were trying to say is that you can take money out of what you have in that reserve fund now. You have no policy for it because you've not passed all the stuff you have to do for the state and there isn't time to do it before budget's due. But you can take money out of that reserve fund and put it toward things for this year's budget. Then at the beginning of next year, you take and you make all your policies and you make a ironclad like you want with all the different lines.
We already have these reserves set up. We have ten accounts that are separated out, that we have interest-bearing accounts. New York class accounts. I mean, these are places where we could take that money and put it into separate line items as we, and they've already been created. We're not reinventing the wheel here.
You're not following me. The money's there. You can take it out of those different things to put it into that to help with your budget this year. Then at the beginning of next year, after you have your new leadership, you make your policies and you make a ironclad the way the state wants. You don't have time to make the policies you need, set up the funds like you're wanting to set up.
I just want to.
Is what they were saying.
Make sure we're not saying we need extra money for twenty twenty-six when we already have surplus from twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five and we have no idea what those numbers are.
I thought you had those.
We absolutely know what those numbers are.
Show me a.
I don't have that in front of me right now. That's kind of odd, put me on the spot. But that money was, that sheet was definitely handed to us a few months ago.
We never even.
And it said clearly what we had left over at the end of twenty twenty-four. It said clearly what we had left over at the end of twenty twenty-four.
You were asking questions at that meeting. You were like, so how did we end up with this?
Yep.
When we had this, that's what you said. And then we didn't have direct answers. We didn't.
Well, we know what we had at the end of those years.
I would love to see it on paper before we do this.
We had it on paper.
Let's put it that way.
Well, I don't, review the A F R, which has been filed and accepted by the state of New York. Annual financial report shows which part were reserved and which part is unappropriated fund balance. Now, the difference between the two years was because of, because of an accounting mistake. Uh, we got advice that we were supposed to classify certain things. So at the end of fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, we thought we had maybe a hundred fifty thousand dollars as unappropriated fund balance. Okay, the controller and Nicole and Kathy Pearson spend a lot of time correcting that. So suddenly, when we sat there and put together the A F R, so last year we were working on a budget thinking we didn't have any fund balance. This year, we know what the fund balance is because it's eight hundred thousand dollars or something along that. So we could use that to pay down a tax levy, whatever the board decides to do. It doesn't, the, the stuff that you see on the New York class accounts is just a convenience of where we put it in the New York class. If it's not a resolution by the board setting up a reserve capital account in the meeting of the controller in New York State. That's, we did, we just, we just sort of been formally wanted. Eddie wants to put away money for replacing, repairing things in the water district, it goes into that thing. It's informal.
But those were set up, correct?
They're not, they're not set up legally. We don't have a reserve fund up there, it's sitting there, so, but we can accept them or not.
They've been there for years.
Yeah, but that doesn't make it, or it doesn't have, it's just a convenient category for classification. We just, we just respect it.
It's not the way the state wants it done now.
It's not an actual reserve account.
So we're not putting that money in there, so we shouldn't put it in there because it's not supposed to go in there. Is that what you're saying?
No, not at all. That money is basically just earmarked for that project, but it's still part of town fund balance. What the town has done is created an account, five hundred dash one for water truck. It's just earmarked there, but it's still part of fund balance. The only thing the town has done is said, here, we were, we're going to set this money aside and we're not going to spend it for anything else. But it's not necessarily a capital reserve account.
But it is reserved for something.
Because that's what the town said they wanted to, but it's not an actual legal reserve where the, the controller could come in and say, well, you can only spend it on water truck. It's what the town's done internally to say, all right, we want to take five hundred thousand dollars of our fund balance and put it towards X or we want to take ten thousand dollars of our fund balance and put it towards Y. That's the only thing that it's, it's there for. It's a basically a placeholder.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Be good.
I understand, I, I just don't understand why that we've been having those accounts set up if they weren't legal, apparent.
They are legal.
They are legal.
Not with the.
But they're not.
They're not precisely what the state.
They're not called a reserve fund. They're called that. When you do a reserve fund, there's a whole bunch of extra stuff that has to do with state. Have to go, and the law can't change where that goes. Has to be reserved for that one.
It, it's the same as if you had your, your home account and you have twenty thousand dollars in your bank account and you say, you know what, I'm going to put five hundred dollars towards Christmas presents. I'm going to put five hundred dollars towards my electric bill and I'm going to put a thousand dollars towards this. It's still part of your twenty thousand, it's just you have that money. That's what I'm going to use to spend on Christmas. That's what I'm going to use for my electric bill. That's the only thing that the town's done. It's just basically saying, we're setting it aside for these, but it's still part of the grand scheme.
It's confusing.
Hey? So uh, just to unify the community, it is very positive that we have eight hundred thousand dollars in unspent fund balance. That's great news, so.
The only thing, I, I, I just want to make sure that everybody understands what that means and Tina will, I'm pretty sure, back me up on this. And this is part of the controller. The eight hundred thousand is great and what we can do towards that is, all right, we're going to spend fifty thousand dollars on playgrounds this year. We don't have to add a, a line item in the budget for fifty thousand dollars, so we don't have to raise taxes. But the controller is very much frowned upon taking that fund balance and buying down our budget every year. They don't like that.
Okay, can I finish what I was going to say then? Just for, thank you. Um, I do think, I mean, I agree with some things everyone has said. I think maybe some of what Laura is coming from, when we went over these uh numbers from twenty twenty-four and I guess I believe it was April, um, at that point, these numbers were still not final. And so when she's talking about buttoning it up, to the best of our knowledge, the documents we got said like something like tentative or there was some qualifier on it that clearly indicated on like, on every page, on the front page, on the back page, that this was not the final number. This was not, none of this was permanent or perfect. So, and that was our understanding after that meeting was that these numbers could still change and were not, they were, I, I believe it said tentative. If it didn't say tentative, it said something like that. Um, and also I have, for years I've asked how much unspent bed tax we have. And we, we, we know for some years, there's still a year and a half, we don't know. I'd like it if we could get that information by our meeting on the thirtieth. The other information I'd like is just um, uh, sales tax that we get from the county, do we get that quarterly? Well, that's a year, we got, we got two quarters at the same time. And the county, it was like, uh, so our sales tax is down four hundred dollars from last year for the two quarters that we had. But I put that down to the eclipse, you know, last year was a big, big knock to me from. Um, and uh, so, yeah, I don't know why the county thinks, you know, sending two quarters at the same time instead. So they're being asked about that right now by the other supervisors to, you know, make sure that we get this quarterly. Um, you know, we're not North Alba, uh, you know, the money helps to come in, in a timely way. So we've gotten two quarters, forty-four thousand maybe, probably in the, in the, in the, in the financial sheets that you all have in your book. So, hey, go ahead, Tim. The same, uh, just the same with bed tax. I know we do, we should be getting that quarterly and I'm just curious and we should know before we start really talking about that, if we get, if we're on track to get as much as we got last year in both sales tax and bed tax. So I'd like to have that information on the third year. Well, Tim, let me show you. Okay? So each month, at the end of the month, we give you a appropriation account, the general appropriation. It also has the revenue account. Now, the revenue account is, uh, we have, uh, where's the S T R fees? You can see where we're at and then you can see where uh bed taxes. Somewhere in here, as I find it. It's page three or four of uh, whatever it's, page three. Page three. So those are all the revenues we've received to date. And you can see uh how it compares to what we budgeted for. Uh, so real property taxes, first one, we budgeted for eight hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. We got that in January. Uh, we had another interesting thing, which is an amount of nineteen thousand, four thirty-seven eighty-two. That's the second item. That was due to the penalty and recovery of what it was uh basically forestry land on Hardy Road. So when they converted it from the four O, whatever it's called, uh, tax status to uh, to become residential, the developer had to pay New York State tax for the tax that they, benefits they got over the years. So we had nineteen thousand, four thirty-seven eighty-two that we were really expecting, but it came in anyway. Um, then you'll get the other community enhancement, that's on two, three, eight, nine. So right now, we have collected seventy-seven thousand, one seventeen forty. Uh, we budgeted that we were going to receive eighty-three thousand, seven hundred. Uh, we will get another check. This is kind of slow. So the bed tax gets paid on September twentieth and that covers uh August, July and June. Okay, the county collects it, then they hold on to it for some reason and we won't see that check until probably November sometime. So we won't actually know what it is that they said our summer was like in terms of bed tax collection until probably after we're done with the budget, that we won't get the money. So maybe they could tell me, I'll ask them, but that's, that's that line. Can I just interrupt real quick? Just that, so the seventy-seven thousand, that's for half the year? Seventy-seven thousand, see, what happens with the bed taxes? Um, the first bed tax return date is due January twentieth. That's collecting for uh October, November and December of the previous year. We don't do accrual. We, we book it for, call it modified accrual. So we take that money in two thousand twenty-four, even though it was for sales in two thousand twenty-three. So it just carries forward. We'll do that next year too. So next year, you'll get a check in February for the bed tax, but it'll. So next year you'll get a check in February for the bed tax, but it'll be for, uh, October, November and December of 2024. Uh, we just, so that was based on last year because we don't do really accrual accounting and say that that's part of 2023's books. That's, that's all that is. So there's a lag, but right there is all, all the information. Uh, that's what we've received. Uh, so far the sales tax, I never could figure out what the hell that is. Been here somewhere. So that's, that, that's, that answers the question. And we won't know until, uh, we get, uh, September 20th, every month starts filing their bed tax returns with the county and we'll hear more about it.
I'm guessing it's the non-property tax distribution by county.
I could never remember which one it was. Yeah, you're, yeah, I think that's.
I just wanted to say that, um, thank you for the education on the reserves. I assumed that they were New York class reserve accounts because I think we've referred to them as that. So my apologies on that. Um, and then for everyone, including board review, the AFR that we had, which I am holding, um, what Tim was referring to and where I was under the assumption of all of them, on each page it says not final. And this was the only copy that we were given. And there are notations on it just from favor saying that they were, there were monies. There was monies due from New York State, uh, for accounts receivable due in, June of 2025. And then allocations of chips earned in 2024 get not received due in June. So that is part of my confusion as far as if we got those monies, this, as far as I was ever under the assumption with the, as it says on the paper, it was not final. So I kept waiting and asking, I think I asked like three different times for us to button things up.
I'm sorry, but what I said was it wasn't accepted by the state. The state accepted it. We filed the final one on the website, which is so.
The only one that I have ever been given is the non-final.
She's only asked you three times about it. Oh, I know. Maybe I should just print everything. It's our, I had said it hadn't been accepted by the state. We were going to make any changes to it. So I'm tired. Okay, thank you. Um, so we have to do our regular meeting stuff. I'm kidding. Do people want to talk? Does anyone make a public comment? That's, we're sitting here.
Have you gone to see Nicole and get the copies of them?
Of what?
I was asking Laura about getting the copies.
I asked the five board, four other board members because we're the ones that are making the decisions. And actually, I think she included it as well.
I talked to, I mean, I have a daily conversation with Paul Austin. So I mean, if you.
You could have replied to my email.
I didn't, I try not to, because I don't like to use email as a form of communication unless I have to call, reply back. I very seldom do, I.
Oh, forget it. This is silly. Um, uh, okay, so, uh, old business, we have the special circumstances, SDR exemption review. Um, I, I think, um, uh, at the last meeting, uh, some proposals were made, uh, to, uh, do a resolution. Um, I, I, I'd be happy to take that off in view of, uh, what I wrote in an email, which I'll tell you. Which is the town adopted a local law, uh, last year and the local law, uh, basically says the town board will be, will hear all uh, exemptions, uh, requests under the permit cap and they'll have to do it by public hearing. So if the board, uh, wants eventually to, uh, delegate that authority to the zoning board of appeals, they'll need to amend the local law. If the board wants to adopt, uh, some sort of resolution that outlines the standards that the board should follow and they're haring exemption caps, they can do that too. But, uh, the one that was submitted at the end of, uh, last month, I, I just pointed out that you can't just delegate it to the zoning board of appeals. Go ahead.
I mean, since it is a local law and not actually part of our zoning code, I think it should stay with the town board because it's not actually in our full-on zoning code. We passed it as a local law.
I have an answer to that. May I?
Go ahead.
Am I, am I wrong?
Yes.
So it is part of our zoning code?
That's the, it says a local law amending the town of Wilmington land use code to add regulations pertaining to short-term rentals. So we are amending the land use code with a local law. So it is a land use code.
So we need to amend the local law, so we can, to, to give it to the CBA. So no, yeah, no, it's, it's. So the next thing I put on the agenda is I would like to, uh, hey guys, please, hold on, hold on.
And I have rights. If somebody talks to me, did I listen? And I know what you say. This is the second time, first time she, now you.
Yes, because it's distracting.
He's not yours.
You're distracting everyone.
That's a right, somebody next to him to tell him clearly what you say. So.
Just so you know, it's distracting for everyone.
Please be respectful.
That's what I'm asking you to do.
Because I'm asking him what you say, so I clearly understand what you say.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Be careful what you're saying.
So my understanding is that no one has stayed on the waitlist for very long. Um, it's just been a, people have just been on it for a few months because enough people are not renewing their permits. If that's been the case, I mean, that's positive and we won't have to wade into this abyss. And that would be positive if we didn't have to wade into this abyss of amending the local law or having these hearings. Also, it's not, nothing urgent. This person got, got what they wanted. They, they have their permit. Yeah. According to them. So, yeah, so we don't need to do it.
I just, I mean, nothing's changed from when we passed it. I don't understand why we would, would go through the whole process of changing it again when that's when, what we all agreed upon a year ago.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna, I don't think anybody. The reason to do it is first of all, I mean, there are many reasons to do it, but one of the reasons is that this board, you know, we have projects that we've been discussing for months and issues that we've been discussing for months that we're, we have a lot on our plate. The zoning board has only met twice since it was, uh, reconstituted. So if this board is having, if our, uh, monthly meetings are averaging two hours plus work sessions, um, and the zoning board is not even meeting, I think it would be good if we could delegate. Well, that's near there, right? So, um, like I said, Tim, I, 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 last month, last month, we, uh, decided to go forward with, with legal review authorizing the proposed zoning changes. Uh, I, I communicated with the board that, um, I would like to authorize Tim to be the point person to talk to the attorney. Uh, because, uh, Tim is the person who, uh, did the most work on it. Um, and, uh, and so I'd like, you know, normally what, so, little history. Uh, it used to be that you had a town attorney who was paid annually and took all phone calls from anybody. Uh, planning board members, town board members, department people and stuff like that. Uh, because if we now have, uh, per hour, uh, attorneys, uh, who have been, uh, retained by the town, uh, they decided that instead of the people picking up the phone and calling with their questions and then suddenly a bill gets submitted that the board didn't really have any idea about, uh, they, they would do it through, uh, the supervisor would be sort of the point person to do communications with the council. Uh, and so, but in this case, uh, I would suggest that we allowed Tim to do that. Uh, so he can push it forward and answer any questions that the attorney's going to have because if the attorney has questions for me about the law, uh, I will, uh, have to defer to Tim to answer it. It's just kind of inefficient. So I'm making a motion, a resolution to authorize Tim to be the point person, uh, to attack Mark Shakner about the local. Making, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Discretions or questions?
Are you inclined to accept that?
I certainly, I'm willing to definitely. I'm only worried about the cost. That's it, you know?
We can talk about it.
Okay.
Right, right. You're the guy who's going to talk to me about it.
And report back.
Yep.
And get a estimate of what the cost would be for, I believe it's like basically four amendments at this point. So to incorporate them into our code. Back a few years ago, when the town board had some amendments to do previously and I'm not sure if it was when Michelle was here, was maybe still when Paula was here or when it was. Um, it, they were to the tune of $5,000 or something like that. And at that time, the board discussed that, uh, they decided not to move forward because of the cost for the amendments. So we had the discussion at the last meeting or the work session about whether we go to a public hearing or whether we let the attorney, um, review it. I just want to make sure that we have those costs and if that's what Tim's going to do upfront before we actually move forward to the attorney, because if it's to the point where it is five, seven, $10,000, it may be beneficial to, uh, have a public hearing and get the public's reaction and opinion before we spend this $10,000 on something that, and then we find out that 75% of the public's not in favor of it. And now we've spent $10,000 on something that's not going to move forward.
Okay, so we're.
No, 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 don't do that. Don't do that.
Okay.
We're, we're still in discussion.
No, it's not, it's not discussion. We resolved at the last meeting to go to, go to the council. We've been through this. We're going to spend the money one way or the other.
Okay.
Okay, it's going to get spent. I would, it, it seems silly to, uh, go to a public hearing and then discover from our, uh, uh, town attorney that it's got lots of fundamental problems. Okay, so we wasted the public's time. We made, we presented a false uh, sort of feeling that it's okay and secure and we can move forward with this and then we learn from the attorney. That's the card. No, you can get the quote.
Right.
Okay, but that's what, it, it, we have, what's our attorney lines over? How much we spent this year?
But before we go into full law, I mean, we can get an opinion on them for maybe a, a few hundred bucks or something. And that's something that Tim can have that discussion, but before we spend $10,000 on something, I'm absolutely not going to approve that. And then all of a sudden, we find out the public's not behind it. That, that's just not the way it's, it should be done and it's, it's never been done that way.
Uh, well, we have, uh, 3,000, uh, $528 so far in the budget left over for the year. So we can work from there. He quotes you with $10,000 when you need to come back to the board. Yeah, so the last time we went, the last time we went down this path, um, the, the lawyer, the consulting firm who basically helped the town draft the zoning code, their quote was more than $20,000. And, uh, I found another firm, Barclay Damon out of Albany, and their quote was three to five. Um, but then other things happened on the board and the effort, uh, it did not seem a worthwhile use of anyone's time to continue attempting to push it forward. But that didn't have to do, it didn't have as much to do with the cost. To just respond to Darren quickly, uh, yes, I mean, I, we're basically on the same page. If he says it's going to be $10,000, my next question is, okay, can I ask up to the rest of the board, the next question is going to be, all right, here's these other five attorneys, let's ask them. Because this firm out of Albany, their quote was three to five, which I think would be acceptable, especially if it's three. So.
Well, we talked about this last month, I think it was about you talking, checking into attorneys. So let's just.
We didn't talk about me checking in? No, no, no.
I thought we talked about.
That was in, that was in an email. It was checking in. That's why, that's why I slowed it down because the resolution was made to go with Mark Shakner. And then we get this email going back and forth about maybe we should get other quotes. And I said, no, I'm not going to get any better credit for it because, you know, Mark Shakner was appointed special counsel at the organization and the resolution. So we don't need, you know, he's on board at 260, at 260. So, okay, so Tim, please, uh, I, I think the resolution is go ahead, please, and, uh, contact him if I can be of assistance, I will. Um, and if, uh, you can get a quote from him and it looks like it's going to be something that the board needs to review and decide again, we can come back and do it that way. And then we can decide to do the public hearing thing however you guys want to do it. Is that okay? Is that the resolution? Now, did you get that? I know we're doing it on the fly and you don't like it while we're doing it.
This is authorizing Tim to speak to the lawyers on the zoning amendments.
Yeah.
To the lawyer.
And he can report back if, uh, Tim in this discretion feels that the, the legal fee may be too much.
Do you want that in the resolution?
Yes. Please.
Well, I'd like, I think you should report back no matter what.
Oh, you will be. But, but you, because we'll ask him about it, but you know, it, it's not worth giving him the authority to go ahead and go forward with switching to the monetary. Okay, that's, that's the resolution. Is there, I'll make the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Laura, second, is any further than this?
She already had.
No, we, we just amended it.
Okay. Okay.
All right, so Laura's seconded. All in favor? I oppose, Gary. Uh, Tim, senior citizen exemption amendment, can we, uh, post that to another day or you got something?
Um, well, we can definitely, we can definitely do it at the, um, well, we're not having a work session. Can we do it at the meeting replacing the work session?
Sure.
Okay, I do have a question. Can we do that by resolution or do we need to do it by local law? I've got, I have documents somewhere in my pile of folders that say both. One says we can do it by resolution and one is a local law.
I think historically Wilmington has stuck with the resolution.
We, I do have an email.
You've done both those?
Have to look at the local law to tell you what we did, criticize.
I'll be glad to write the resolution. What should it say? Just the word, I mean, I know what it, I know what the meaning is, but as far as the actual legalese, should it just say that we're resolving to increase the senior citizen property tax exemption by, uh, $5,000? And then what are the next words after that?
No, I'd just say a copy, a copy, a copy of the new senior sec exemption policy is attached. And adopted. It's going to be how you drafted it out, like the regular one.
Okay, I'll redo it.
You can call real property and they'll help you with it too. Dave helped us, helped with it last time.
That's actually the email I'm referring to is from him saying you can do it by resolution and, um, but okay, um, I don't, I don't need any other words. I'll just say it's amended, uh, according, in accordance with the attached document.
Thank you.
Great.
All right, so I mean, a resolution authorizing, uh, payment of the bills from August 12th, 2025 to September 8th, 2025.
We'll make it.
There a second? Any questions or discussion? All in favor? I oppose, Gary. Public comment? Okay, please, if you have, uh, want to talk to the board, please raise your hand. Uh, I will, I will call on you. Just a minute. So I, I, I see you, Bat had her hand up first, so you'll, you'll be next. Thank you.
Yeah, I know it's been a long night. Um, but, uh, thank you.
Sorry.
So, um, my name is Linda Schuster. My comments are related to last month's town board meeting and the treatment of Amy Langford when she asked for funds for the youth commission. In my opinion, Amy was berated in a public forum by certain members of the board and the town supervisor for failing to obtain an EIM and a checking account for the youth commission. It's clear that these board members have little experience with small volunteer organizations. I have a lot of experience and I can tell you that what these board members were asking is a huge amount of work and headache. In order to obtain an EIM, the first thing you have to do is file with the state to incorporate typically as a tax exempt, five, five, one, C, three. In New York State, you need a minimum of three officers to incorporate. If two dedicated Wilmington residents are willing to run the youth commission, they cannot establish a five, one, nine, two, three. When tax time rolls around each year, you have to figure out how to file your taxes despite the fact that none of the volunteers is a finance or tax expert. Amy was told she needed to open a checking account. This is also a lot of work because every time the officers change, you have to find a time for all of the old officers and all of the new officers to group down to the bank and change the names on the account. It is not unusual for small volunteer organizations to have ups and downs. Some years it can be challenging to get officers because people have families and jobs and other commitments. That does not mean the organization, organization is not needed or valuable. However, even when the group is not functioning, someone still needs to file tax returns if the organization is incorporated. The word talks about recruiting new full-time residents in new businesses. A town that demonstrates it has an interest and an investment in its youth is attractive. Rather than berating Amy for not taking on a cumbersome and unrealistic process, these board members and the supervisor could have simply stated that the comptroller indicated that the current practice could not continue. They could have offered to create a line item in the budget for the youth commission and thanked her, thanked her for her efforts. That would have been the kind and supportive thing to do. Thank you for your time.
Pat?
I just was wondering how to come from him.
I just was wondering how the comprehensive plan...
So, thank you. So we've submitted our application. We'll hear whether we get a grant in December. So the estimated cost for the comprehensive plan is $90,000 for the consultant. If we're successful with getting the grant, we would make a 10% contribution of $90,000. Now, the way grants work, we have to pay it first before the state reimburses us. So the budget proposal I've been throwing out numbers here tonight, I'm gonna propose that we reserve $45,000 for the first year of the consultant costs and move forward. We'll know in December whether we got the grant or not.
Did you create a committee?
We have a sort of an interest group of people who've applied. I'm hoping that at the budget, when we, if we can budget the funds, then we can reach out to them to, you know, thank them and see if they wanna start working. Yeah, we need them, I'm the person. Anybody else? Yes?
See something down in the... Do you want to address these? Write to you guys or you bring it out right now?
Depends on how, you know, if the whole board needs to hear it.
Well, no, it's just down in the Hazelton Cemetery. That old Army site's been empty for like 30 years.
Okay.
I'm on the committee to get that water plant, but it had, now it's just an ice floor.
Okay.
And it's up there in the back and it's one of the...
I'll take it out. I'll take it out.
Thanks. That's all I needed.
Thank you, Mary.
There's water in it.
Well, they're still using that.
Are they using it?
Yeah. I don't know who built it, but there's water.
And if that be the case, could they clean it all?
Have you painted? Yeah, the moss off it.
Yeah, I'm kinda like, yeah, whatever you want to do.
Mary, why don't you go paint it?
If they're still using it, you should keep it.
Are we certain we need consultants for the comprehensive plan? Do we, is that...
So we're agreeable, clean it up.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, yes, I think we do need consultants for the comprehensive plan. This is a, in New York State, so Don had sent out an email, you know, when New York State has opened up a window of opportunity to apply for downtown comp, you know, revitalization grants and money, 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 money. A comprehensive plan is one of the things they look on their checkbox to whether they're even gonna let us go past it. And so unfortunately, it's a pay-to-play kind of deal. The consultants are the ones who would help us. They would take our information, but they would also help us put it in a form that satisfies the New York State kind of grant writing requirements. So it's unavoidable unless you, you know, don't own a comprehensive plan, but I don't think that's a good idea.
And just to refresh my memory, there's, there's one consultant firm and it's $90,000 or you looked at, I'm sorry, I just don't remember. You looked at several and...
I asked for requests from three.
Okay.
The only one responded, and we needed to use that to put into, you know, to get our application for the grant in on time and... No, we haven't signed a contract with them yet, you know, for the reasons, you know, we need to make sure we have some money lined up to get them going. But they were the ones who gave us, I had asked even, you know, I reached out to the guys who just finished North Elbus Compost and Plant because I said, yeah, you know, small community with a big ski mountain and they do a lot of New Hampshire work. Nobody, nobody replied. We're too, we're too small here for hanging these guys.
You have to know how much Jay is spending, does any happen to know?
Well, it's, New York State require, you know, they've increased the, my guess is they're 70 to, 70 to 80,000. It's New York State now says that, you know, part of the grant we have to apply is, they've moved it up to 90,000. So that's what we tell in New York State, we're gonna be paying the consultant because that's what they wanna hear. Any, yes?
Well, we're talking about budgets, so in the past, I've been a member of the cemetery group.
Yes.
There's not many of us left that we haven't met in a long time. But in the past, we've been told there was $2,000 a year to be done on cemetery work.
Yeah.
And never get an answer, is that money carrying for the next year?
Without a resolution to take it, Kerry.
Pardon?
Not without a resolution to make it, Kerry. It doesn't carry at this point.
So let me just say that right now, we budgeted $6,500 for the cemeteries for 2024. We spent $2,624,20. Well, most of that was the material costs for the highway department work over there, so they, you know, so we took those funds out of the cemetery. My hope is that the end of the year, there'll be a balance left over and we will roll it into the cemeteries because we also have to start opening up the upper part of Hazelton Cemetery. And I did have a quote from Ralph Schischler one time about laying it out in some way so that we can, you know, issue plot deeds in a little less...
The last time there was money spent for the project for a contractor, Jim Kelly took down a huge dead white pine and a couple other trees that missed, probably been four years ago.
Yep.
There's trees that could be addressed right now before they become a problem.
Sure. I mean, right now, I mean, I, I mean, the information we get from what's needed to be spent at the cemeteries, we knew the roads were washing out all the time and the highway department helped address that this year. We didn't go ahead with retaining a survey area, so we haven't spent the money. But if somebody comes up and says, listen, this needs to be done quickly because we have white pine sitting there, and we'll look at this and say, yeah, we can afford that or...
So maybe in the years of your, when I or whoever wants to go and take a look at two things?
Sure. Yeah, I just, you know, to me, unless somebody brings it to my attention, I don't know.
I'll give it, I'll give it, I'll give it a bit.
Thank you.
And also, in the past, they've asked for gravestones in each of the two town cemeteries to be uprighted for some, tipped over, just way across, leaves the ground, and the majority of Americans, they can't move them by hand yet. Previously, Dave Lincoln, I don't know if he's still in business or not, but he's bringing in his, putting in, reset the stones.
Okay.
Another thing, money has been spent on before.
Yeah.
Other towns.
No, we, we put money in the budget for certain funds and, you know, be happy to...
All right, I'll do touch your list.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay. Yes, sir?
Hi all, my name's Paul Glover. I'm the executive director of Comparia Video Trails Alliance, and I came here to thank the board and the town for hosting the recent Wilmington Mountain Bike Festival here this past Labor Day weekend. We had hundreds of mountain bikers as well as non-biking town residents gathered together to celebrate and enjoy bikes, trails, food, music and community. Attendance was down a little bit this year because of the weather forecast, but we still had a record number of cycling vendors on site and I think helped bring some economic benefits to the local food, lodging and markets. This event continues to shine a positive light on the quality of the regional trails here within Wilmington, as well as the hospitality and beauty of Wilmington itself, which the mountain bike capital of the Adirondacks. I also want to thank Henry, Charlie, Ellie, Mary, Brandy and Erica for all the work they've done leading the Hardy Kids Mountain Bike Race every year for the last eight years. They've handed the reins of that over to, for organizing that, to Beta, and I just wanna reassure everyone that we're committed to keeping that important event ongoing. So again, for the thousands of people who have come here over the years to enjoy the Wilmington Mountain Bike Festival, thank you so much for hosting.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? The, thank you for speaking. Do you find that the weekend, I mean, there is so much happening that weekend, do you ever consider changing to a different weekend?
We talked about that and we've heard a lot of vehement, don't do it, from the community of people who have been participating in this event. Two years ago, we actually asked that question as part of a survey that we sent to the respondents and they told us definitively, no, Labor Day weekend is when we want this. And one of the reasons is because a lot of people are traveling. We have a lot of people come from Canada, from Pennsylvania, there's a lot of travelers. They like the fact that there's a recovery day for them on Monday.
Okay. Thank you.
Just a minute, Suzie.
Yeah, just a question about whether the compost for good food scrap program, is there any decision or movement on that?
Any movement, no.
Is what?
So, we, we were visited by a group and gave a presentation to the board about compost, food, they provide the service. And so I'm thinking, but, you know, this is just me spitballing, the location of where we're quick being. So right now, the transfer station's the obvious one, but are there places like the community garden around here where it might be, you know, we have space in the parks area over there that might be an appropriate spot? This is just me, my thinking, you know, it hasn't been discussed and nobody's really taken any, whatever, decided anything as a board or, we'd have to talk to both the transfer station guy and our parks guy and Louis, if something needs to be built for it. Thank you. Somebody, who just wanted to talk.
Thanks. Just while you're here, this is an idea I've brought up at previous meetings. We do get bed tax and every year but one, since the town started getting bed tax money directly, we've had tens of thousand dollars left over at the end of the year. And I brought up the idea that community groups such as Beta should apply for grants of this money. And I think we would all agree, we've had a lot of discussion on what this money should be used for, but I would think that we would all be on the same page, that building new trails would be a perfectly appropriate way to spend this money. And actually, before I was on the board, I think the previous, well, long ago, back in the old, old days, the town board did allocate some money to Beta. So I just wanted to bring that up. If you have needs, that's, we, there is some of that extra money generally, and I think we will have some extra money this year too.
We're, we're working right now with DEC to try to get a work plan passed so that we can do restoration on some of the trails at Hardy. So I may be back with a proposal for you for that that would be beneficial to the trails here.
Thank you very much, everyone. I did have the thing about executive session, but I don't think it's necessary, so I'll just move to a chair. So thank you for coming tonight. This will make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you all for coming. I'll raise it.
Chair.
I'm pleased to be here.
Chair.
I'm glad.
What you like?